All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, November 4th, 2020. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He unmuted himself.
Okay, first item, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
My second.
Roll call vote. Mary? Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, board reports. Nagina, you're on the top of the screen. You get to go first.
All right, so the 2021-2022 student member of the Board of Applications have been released. So if you, in order to apply while serving, you have to be in either the 11th or 12th grade. So current sophomores or juniors that are interested in applying can find the applications and more details about the position on the St. Mary's Association of Student Council's website, which can be accessed through the SCSPS site.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Mary?
Good morning, everyone. I want to thank the teachers, administrators, faculty, and staff, and the superintendent and his executive team for being steadfast in building relationships and building a sense of belonging with our students. We thank you for all your hard work and efforts during this unprecedented time. Thank you so much.
Mr. Davis?
I've been busy out visiting seven schools, including the Firehouse last week. Congratulations to Kathy and to Mary and to me. And so I'm looking forward to four more great years with the Board.
Karen, may I say something, please?
Sure, go ahead.
I congratulated Kathy earlier this morning, and Jim wasn't here, so I want to congratulate again Kathy and Jim and myself for being re-elected to the Board of Education, and I look forward to working with the entire team. So God bless us all this week throughout due diligence.
All right, thank you. Rita?
Thank you.
No, no.
Okay, Kathy?
I am very grateful to the citizens of St. Mary's County who chose to reelect me and give me the opportunity to serve for four more years, as well as Jim and Mary. Congratulations. And I would also say that I continue my work with the Mape Legislative Group and met with them virtually last week. So things continue to roll for us, so.
Thank you, Kathy.
Let's see, Monday, we had a school safety advisory board meeting, which I serve on. The meeting, we didn't have a meeting in October, the last meeting in September, there was discussion on the arrest records that the state, MSDE, had released recently for each of the counties in the state. I think the conversation at that meeting then obviously turned to the role of SROs, as some people might, may or may not be aware, there are several counties that are considering removing SROs from their schools. So to kind of educate everyone, because the advisory board then provides guidance to the sub-cabinet, which is Dr. Salmon and several other people appointed by Governor Hogan, and the President of the Senate and the Chairman of the House on the state legislative side. So we had a very lengthy presentation on the role of school resource officers, which centered on the community policing, the community involvement, building community relationships. There was a lot of discussion about the MOUs that take place between the policing agencies and the county school systems, and I think it was very informative because our committee is extremely broad, and I think a lot of people just misunderstand what the role of an SRO is in a school, thinking that it is simply there to arrest and, you know, have, take a hard line on discipline when that is not at all what it is. So that was extremely informative, I think, to a lot of people who do not serve on a Board of Education or, you know, work in the, you know, in the policing community. They also had a update on the anonymous reporting. There is a hotline, you know, it's continuing to be rolled out, and they've changed their, I guess, their push a little bit because there are, you know, the children in most of the counties are not in school, so they've kind of changed to a more social media platform in order to get that information out and that number out to anyone who may need to report anonymously on anything that's happening in the school or even in their community. And then we also had, we have a new student member of the Board because our last student member graduated with a class of 2020, so they do have a student focus group that's comprised of 11 students, so it does not necessarily have a representative from every county, but we were assured that it was, you know, that it was geographically, you know, well represented. So apparently, this committee of students, they accept applications once a year. So I guess for Nagina, as it comes forward for the upcoming year, that you can have someone from the Association of Student Councils apply in order to be placed on this committee. Right now, they're just meeting virtual, but they have different topics that they discuss each month, you know, mental health awareness, suicide prevention, bullying, social media and the dangers of it, or the benefits of it in some cases. So that might be something that the SLAC group might want to either reach out to or at least maybe look into to make sure that some of the more rural counties are represented, because as we have seen in the state, the big five are always the noisiest and, you know, I think the student experiences for someone in Montgomery County or Baltimore City is probably a little different than what we have down here. So that is all I have. Anyone have anything else? And congratulations to the three of you. We will continue as we have gone for the last few years. So congratulations, everyone. It was a very different election season for each of you.
Very much so.
All right, Scott, you're on. What do you have for us?
Well, all right. Very exciting day for us today. We welcome to our schools over 2,700 students today, and we will have the other half of that cohort group, the other 2,700, joining us on Thursday. I'll get to that a little bit later. I'm gonna, I want to start with, again, emphasizing, as we have for all of these updates, that the decisions that we make as to when we bring back students and how we conduct ourselves within the frame of the public school system in St. Mary's County is based on guidance that is provided from the governor's office, that is vetted through the Department, the Maryland Department of Health, the Maryland State Department of Education, and Governor Hogan's office. The decision matrix is predicated on two data drivers. The first is the testing positivity rate, a percentage, and the second is the new case rate per 100,000, a number. So a percent and a number. Those following Governor Hogan and certainly reading the Baltimore Sun will recognize that we have seen an increase in case rate and positivity rate over the last several weeks, after having very enviable and low numbers in September. Throughout the month of October, we have seen them climb. Across the entire state of Maryland, the case rate per 100,000, new case rate per 100,000 is 13.29. So they're adding on a seven-day average, rolling average, 13.2 new cases per 100,000 people. And of those being tested, 3.77% are coming back as positive. That is using the state's calculation for positivity, and the state's calculation for positivity is all the tests given and all of the positives that come back, even if somebody has been tested multiple times within that rolling seven-day window. And many people are, as a result of work or working within a location or being exposed to somebody, but that is the duplicated number, 3.77. That is for the state of Maryland. Contrasted with the St. Mary's County, so using that same measurement, that same data, St. Mary's County has a case rate per 100,000 of 7.68. Now, that changes every single day. This grab was done on November 2nd, so it was done on Monday. Our positivity rate, using the governor's rate of all the tests over all the positives, all the positives over all the tests, we are at 2.17. Specifically, that gives us the third lowest case rate in the state of Maryland for Monday, November 2nd. It gives us the lowest percent positive in the state of Maryland for Monday, November 2nd. But, as we have said in the past, we certainly monitor all that data. That gives us the best comparative data, because we're all measuring our apples to their apples, but we don't just use apples, we also use oranges. And the oranges are our local health data that comes from our health office, and specifically under the guidance of Dr. Mina Brewster, our local health officer. And it is the most recent data. So the most recent data, local data, our positivity rate using local data, that's from yesterday, 11, 3, 20, 20, is 4.55%. It is higher than the state's calculation, because our positivity rate, calculated by the St. Mary's County Health Department, removes all duplicates. So if you get tested multiple times in a week and you have, you only get counted once. So if you're negative, you're counted once. If you're positive, you're counted once. And as a result, that's 4.55. If we look back to last week, we sent a letter to all staff and to all parents saying we were seeing a trend where we got above 5%, not using the state's data. We have never been over the 5% since we've been, had people back in school since the beginning of the school year, but using our local data, we got above 5%. We had a day where we had a very high reporting, and we said, hey, we want to understand what exactly is going on. So we are going to push our start date from Monday to Wednesday. And in the time intervening, we've watched, we've communicated, we've been in constant contact back and forth, and we see ourselves as of Monday below 4, below 5% using local data. It may go over, it may go back down, but it's been hovering right around 5%. Our new case rate using local data, now our local data is actually lower than the state's data, which is really quite interesting, which is why you have to look at all the data. So our local case, new case rate per 100,000 is 6.58 using local data, and that is including not only the PCR test, but also the antigen test. So any, any test that you take in St. Mary's County and it comes back, we're including that data in there. We also saw a spike in this last week, and it was forecast by several different things going on, but it went back down. It's, it's gonna hover right back around. We monitor it every single day. This number is a percent. This number is a number per 100,000, because some people have been saying, you're over, you're 6%. No, we are not. We are at 6.5 new cases as a seven-day rolling average out of 100,000. If you want to report it as a percent, that is .00658%. You can see why they don't present it as a percent. And they don't present it out of 100, because it would also be, it would then be a much lower number. That's why we chose in 100,000. Okay.
And just to remind everyone, the population of St. Mary's County is about 150,000.
It's about 115, 115, I think, is the current.
Right.
Yeah, so. So that's where we are. So based on all of this, we keep on going back. Data has to drive the decision. Science has to rule the day. So we find ourselves on the other side of the testing positivity chart, so we get to that first number, we are below 5%. That puts us over onto this side of the, of the chart. When we go new case rate, the spectrum that they give is 5 to 15 new cases per day, per 100,000. And if it's 5 or lower, you're green. You're supposed to be expanded in-person programs. And let's be specific, expanded in-person programs are like, you go back to normal. You don't, there's no, there isn't a hybrid or anything like that. Everybody would come back to school every single day. We haven't consistently been there and stayed there, so we're not really gonna consider our people coming every single day. We find ourselves right in the middle of that, and we go back and forth. We haven't been over 15 per 100,000. We find ourselves in the middle, and in the middle of that is the hybrid or partially in-person program. And that is exactly what we are doing. That is exactly what we are doing. And that is what we have been doing since October 7th. Wednesday, October 7th, is when we welcome back children in our regional programs to several sites throughout the, throughout the system, and we've had them in there for then three weeks that followed. Last week, on the 28th and the 29th, we had orientation day for Head Start, Pre-K, K, 6, and 9, to have those kids, because they're, they're new to systems, they're new to schools, to have them in for a day worth of orientation. So we had 3,100 students back with us for those two days, and it was, it was really great. It was really, really wonderful to see these pictures of little bodies and medium-sized bodies and some big bodies back in our schools, socially distanced, working their way, making an in-person connection to teachers. I will tell you that when I was voting, early voting, I was stopped by two different parents who could not say enough positive things about the school system, how they, how well teachers have handled the, the virtual environment, and how happy they are to have their children come back in school, and how excited their kids were actually to be back in the physical space to get on the bus to go to the school. So here we are today. We've got 5,500 students in Phase 2 that are coming back to in-person instruction. It's not exactly split down the middle, so it's not like 2,750 kids exactly are on Wednesday and 2,750 kids are exactly on Thursday, but it's approximately broke in half for those two days. And we have added first grade and our seniors. So it's all the preschool, special ed, all of the Head Start, Pre-K, K1. In the middle schools, just sixth graders. And in the high schools, our largest schools, are our kids coming in, our freshmen and our seniors, because it's exceptionally important that we make sure that our freshmen are getting that good solid start, and it is imperative that our seniors are making the progress that they need to be making so that they can indeed walk across the stage in the, at the end of the, at the end of this year, in June, May and June 2021. This will continue to Wednesday, Thursday, then Monday, and then Tuesday, then Veterans Day, everybody is off. Then Thursday, Group B will come in, and then on the 16th will be the final phase, Phase 3, which is all of our students, Pre-K through 5 at the elementary, 6, 7, and 8 at the middle, high school, 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. At that point, that will be 13,000 students. So we're gonna have about 6,500 students in our buildings on one day and 6,500 on the second day. We have already gone out, we've communicated with all our parents, we've gone back and forth, we've identified who's in Group A, who's in Group B, a select group that's in A and B, they attend all four days, and who is virtual. It varies from school to school, but it is over 70% of all of our parents in St. Mary's County public schools have said that they want their children back in virtual, in in-person education. And in fact, at some of our schools, it's in the 80% that, that have their kids signed up for in-person instruction. So by the time we work our way through November, we're gonna have 13,000 kids coming to school every single day and interacting with their teachers, two out of the five days per week. On the other days, they will be attending virtually. That gets us through December. December continues with that same number all the way up until winter break. Now, COVID exists. COVID is being spread throughout the community. We still have a positivity rate of about 5%, and we have a new case rate of anywhere from seven to 10 cases per 100,000 added every single day. So there will be people who have tested positive for COVID in our schools. So what we can tell you is that we are following all of the guidance from the Centers for Disease Control, from the Maryland Department of Health, and from the St. Mary's County Health Department. I don't know how many times we've presented to you the, I wear a mask, you wear a mask, we're six feet apart, we wash our hands, we use hand sand, we wipe down surfaces. That's the way we keep ourselves and others safe. That is absolutely implemented in all phases of our, of our program. But that's only while people are in schools. When you go out into the wider world, when you are living your best life, you are making decisions as to what activities you want to engage in, from low risk to medium risk to high risk, that's a person's personal prerogative, and that's their choice, and that's their life, and we have no control over it. So we will have people who test positive for COVID. We have a great relationship with the, with the St. Mary's County Health Department, and we have every single day, real-time, daily conversations about all positive cases that are happening in the community and with our employees and ultimately with our students. So the Maryland Department of Health, the Maryland State Department of Education, they put forth this guidance document on August 28th, 2020, and they haven't updated it since. So it's our understanding that they are working on it now and may provide some additional guidance or some modification, that we can't wait around for them to modify their work or to come to some conclusion or to make a different decision. So we've, we've moved forward. They have three different facets of their guidance. One is for communication, one is for notification of contacts who must quarantine, and the third is what to do when you have somebody who tests positive, isolation, exclusion, quarantine, and ultimately returning to school. There's a lot of words. We're living all the words. So the first is that for communication, the school system has to develop a process where we are notified, the school is notified, employees notify us, parents notify us, the Health Department notifies us in real time. And if somebody is notified in real time, we have to have a process and a procedure for getting parents in, to get them picked up, to get them out. And then once they have been picked up and out, how we communicate that out to staff and others, and parents and the larger community. And we've worked out all of that. Notification, this is the next phase. Once you have somebody who tests positive, how do you go about determining who is designated as a close contact and must quarantine themselves for 14 days? The school system is not in charge of that. The school system doesn't have that power of or authority to tell somebody that they are recommended for quarantine or they must quarantine. That is the Health Department. Our job is to work as proactively and engage as meaningfully as we possibly can with the, with the Health Department to help them with contact tracing, to identify close contacts. We do that, we're, we're doing that, we have been doing that since March. The last is that isolation, exclusion, quarantine, and return talks about how we go about the process of identifying and informing and then walking people through the process, and in our end, keeping track of who is now in isolation because they've tested positive, exclusion because they're presumptively positive, or quarantine because they are considered to be a close contact of somebody who has indeed definitively tested positive for COVID. At the very end, the last two parts are that we really talk more about like the Health Department. We have to, we have to coordinate, we have to work with the Health Department. They're gonna ultimately determine the level of exposure, they're going to help inform us as to what next steps would be. Most importantly, if we get to the point where we see transmission, not just a positive case, because we're gonna have positive cases, we have had positive cases, but where we see transmission, where somebody had no exposure to anybody else who had COVID, they've, they've identified it and they looked at it, and the only exposure they've had is with some person within the school system, because perhaps they didn't follow the CDC guidelines, or perhaps because they were within 6 feet for more than 15 minutes, something like that. That's when we'll be working with the Health Department to determine next steps. And, and it's, it's from here to here to here, it's a, it's a circling out. So before we get to the point where we're quarantining very large groups of people, we'll be working very closely with the Health Department to understand exactly what the level of exposure is. And if it gets to the point where we, so we first have one person, then we have close contacts, or perhaps we have to look at larger numbers within a classroom, or perhaps we have to look at numbers from between several different classrooms, because somebody wasn't following protocol throughout the day, and at the point where we have multiple cases in one school where we might have to actually shut down the school, all of that will be along a process and a continuum. So with that being said, please, parents, if your child has any COVID-like symptoms, do not send them to school. Parents, if your children have any COVID-like symptoms, please do not send them to school. And let's be very clear that COVID-like symptoms are the same symptoms that a person might exhibit if they had something like a cold, or allergies, or had stayed up really late, had some fatigue and ate poorly the day before, and had some general feeling of nausea. All of these fall under the broader category of COVID-like illness. That's why it's very difficult to go into a doctor's office right now, because everything is a COVID-like illness. Please work with us on that. And certainly, parents, if you have been identified as a close contact, if somebody in your house has gone out for testing, do not send your child to school. Quarantine them in your own home, stay there until you get the results back from the test and you feel comfortable and confident that your child isn't gonna then be notified later on that they are a close contact or indeed that they are. Because what we've heard most recently, the, especially our young people, because they are, they are unaware that they have COVID. They are asymptomatic, they are lightly symptomatic, they thought they just had a cold, they had, they thought it was allergies, those kind of things. And that's, that the only blessing and positive thing that we have seen recently is it appears that the majority of the cases that we're seeing in St. Mary's County particularly are these asymptomatic, lightly symptomatic cases. And that's the greatest challenge we face. We have had flu every single year in every single one of our schools, absolutely. With the flu, you have the flu. You know you have the flu, because you feel like you have the flu. And so it's much easier to figure out exactly what we are, when we are, what the transmission is. With this, we're, what, eight, nine months into it, and still people can't tell us truly with any absolute explicit definitive, this is the time in which you are, you know, it's, it's easily transmitted, this is the time when you are, this is when you, so best guess some of the stuff. So we have a plan, we're working with a plan, we're working with the Health Department. Please continue to work with us and, and always make decisions to the better part of caution with sending your children to school. It's not gonna only impact your child, it's gonna impact the lives of other children and the teachers and perhaps people throughout your family. So with that, thank you very much. Other than, let's, let's, we do have a recovery planning page, and every single parent should have already known this. We sent this out last week when we said we were gonna do a pause. We realized that there's so much data out there, and it's in different places, and people said, well, where are you getting that data? I have this data. What about this data? So we did a landing page as part of the recovery planning webpage where we put all the data right there. So we put the St. Mary's County Health data, you can go there and look at it yourself. The Maryland safely returned school dashboard, you can go there and look at it yourself, and you can compare between all the different counties, and you can take a look at the trend data. And actually, link to that is another site where you can see how many people are hospitalized and all of that as well. And then the last is, we are committed to providing that data in real time to you relative to St. Mary's County public schools. So the last data is our specific data for how many positive COVID cases we have in real time in our system by our building, staff, and students. So you know, there isn't, we don't need to have rumor and conjecture, and the data is the data, the truth is the truth, the information's the information. So with that, we're gonna, I'm gonna put COVID aside, because I do want to talk about the fact that this is obviously a very good idea. This is obviously a very good idea to recognize excellence in online teaching. And the graphic is actually an excellent graphic. I can tell because imitation is the sincerest form of flattery. This is, this is what every school system should be doing, because teachers are doing incredible work every single day. And in fact, there are 893 nominations as of today, since we started this three weeks ago, we did start it three weeks ago. And they are spread 575 elementary, 180 middle, 135 high, high school, the majority of them coming from parents and colleagues, but also a growing number from students themselves. This is really wonderful. It's a wonderful way to recognize somebody. And we're gonna highlight Sarah, Jeremirillo, Jeri, yeah, Mio, Jeremio from Evergreen Elementary School and Special Education. A parent says, she's really gone above and beyond and helped my son with gaps in understanding his classwork. She offers to make time to help him with classwork, and when I feel overwhelmed, has really been my saving grace during this time. So what a wonderful thing to hear from a parent, that you are really helping not only the child, but you're also helping the parent. Margaret Daly, Maggie Daly from Lenartown Elementary School with Grade 1. Listening to Mrs. Daly teach, I can feel her enthusiasm coming through the screen. She has a very bright and cheerful demeanor that shines through. My daughter is flourishing, because Mrs. Daly takes the time to make each student feel comfortable and happy to learn. And I believe that that parent will actually be, that child will be there. And I believe that that parent will actually be, that child will be there today to be able to see Mrs. Daly in person at Lenartown Elementary School. For Spring Ridge Middle School, Heather Howe. She always finds a way to make learning not only virtually fun but also effective. For example, she assigns work, she makes sure that all the questions are answered before we leave the Google Meet, she responds quickly to emails, she uses Jamboard to show us all the steps-by-step writing it out to ensure we understand the concept, and that's from a student. So, students, thank you so much. Cara Durier from Chopticon High School, teaching English. She maintains a positive attitude towards everything. She plays music and starts every class with three good things. I usually don't talk in class, but I participate because of how kind-hearted she has been. I leave, I have her early in the day and she always makes my day a little brighter starting with her. Those are, those are really incredible words. I hope that the other school systems that have elected to do a process like that also have these warm and wonderful recognitions from parents and colleagues and students. It really does help. This is, this is exhausting. This is exhausting, exhausting work. Just when you think we have a really great plan and we're moving forward, there's some new wrinkle or modification or something, and our teachers are simply, they're simply magnificent. They, they take everything in stride, they move forward with passion and productivity and creativity. And as a result of that, we're going to have thousands of children back inside the school today, some of them for the first time since March 13th, 2020. And that's, that's why we're doing what we're doing and we're going to continue to go forward. And I just, I thank you very much for the support of the board and it's been, it's been an unwavering support. It's also been a determined request for having all the data, having all the information, making sure that every single decision is grounded in data and science and it's the best thing we can possibly do for kids. You are unwavering in that expectation and I hope that you know we are delivering on it. And to be on a board that is as stable as this board, to have this, to be able to work with all of you for term after term, it obviously is a testament to the valuable work that you're doing and the strongly held belief across the community that you are upholding the position to which you have been elected. So, congratulations to Mrs. Washington, congratulations to Mr. Davis, and congratulations to Mrs. Allen.
Thank you. I just have one more thing to add.
Sure.
Just thank you to all of the teachers. As everyone knows, the first marking period ended on Friday. Just based on, as I talked with the superintendent a little earlier, the volume of assignments that came in a crushing form toward the end of the marking period and probably took up a lot of their weekend's time in order to make sure that everything was graded and that even though the students might not have been diligent in meeting the deadlines, those teachers were still dedicated to make sure that those assignments were graded and they received credit for the work that they had done, although it might have been incredibly late. So, it has been a challenge. I think it's been an adjustment to see how this platform worked versus what, how it worked in the spring. It's not quite the same and I think maybe that reality is setting in with some of our students. Just a reminder, all the parents, you can still log in and track your child's progress. You have, oh, we're giving your own Schoology login, so you can look at all of your children, all of your students at the same time. You don't have to, you know, log back in and out. So, you know, it's, it truly is a group effort. So, thank you to all of those teachers when you click on your dashboard and see you have 700 assignments to grade across heaven knows how many classes, so, and giving every student the opportunity to succeed, so.
I have to say, it was nice coming in this morning and seeing the buses on the road. I know we've had buses with the other students we've brought back, but as I came across the Hollywood Road this morning on my way here to see Larry Kane, who was my children's elementary school bus driver, driving, driving, heading to go pick up students this morning made me feel like it was, was a good way to start the day.
Okay, anything else?
Mrs. Washington.
Oh, Mrs. Washington, yes. Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. In response to Dr. Smith's report, I want to thank him and his team who put together the process to nominate an outstanding educators doing virtual learning. I am especially proud of our students who took the opportunity to write a short passage about educators who have inspired, encouraged, and built relationships with them. And this is what we do. We teach our students how to read, write, and speak and express themselves in a positive manner. So, I really appreciate all the nominations that came in. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And with that, I think we have one recognition to start, which is Ms. Long.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
To continue our recognitions of all the wonderful work that's happening across our district, I'm asking you to join me this morning as we recognize, show appreciation for our school psychologists in celebrating School Psychology Awareness Week, which is next week, November 9th. I asked Ms. Mia Blackwood to join us this morning as we recognize all our school psychologists. Mia is the newest member of our team and as we make our way through this Zoom meeting, in order to see her, to connect a face to a name, I'm going to just ask Mia to say hello and just to tell you what school she is supporting.
Uh-oh, she's paused, there you go.
She's there.
Hi, I'm Mia Blackwood, I'm the newest school psychologist with St. Mary's Public Schools. I'm going to be supporting the students at Pioneer Point Elementary School, Ridge Elementary School, and the Fairlead Academies.
Great, thank you Mia, and welcome. We're certainly glad to have you joining our team.
Thank you.
All of our school psychologists are uniquely qualified members of our school teams. They apply their expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to help children and youth succeed. They counsel students, they meet with parents, collaborate with teachers, families, and school teams, they conduct assessments and support academic and behavioral interventions. This year's theme for our school psychologists is the power of possibility, which conveys hope, growth, resilience, and renewal. The word "power" implies that things can and will happen. Our school psychologists help empower children to grow in areas of skills such as social skills, empathy, and compassion for others, as well as individual or interpersonal skills such as problem-solving, goal-setting, buddy skills. They are skilled at assisting students and staff and seeing possibilities and developing positive change to thrive in school and in life. So, in recognition of all our school psychologists and the important work they do, I invite Dr. Smith to share the resolution.
All right, hold on. Let me, let me unmask and find the resolution. There it is.
Oh, Peg might have it.
Uh-oh.
You have the hard copy?
Does anybody have a hard copy?
Are you just going to read it?
Yeah. Sorry, Ms. Long, I'm going to get a hard copy.
No, that's okay.
I'm even going to put on glasses so I don't make a mistake. All right. Wonderful. Thank you. Whereas, the week of November 9th through 13th, 2020 has been designated as National School Psychology Week in the school systems across our nation. And whereas, all children have a natural desire to learn and it is vital that society invest in education to adequately support the needs of our children and youth. And whereas, our education system must ensure a safe, healthy learning environment for all of those children and be able to recognize and respond to their emotional and psychological needs, including those caused by personal or societal crises. And whereas, school psychologists are specially trained to help parents and educators identify and reduce risk factors, create effective caring schools, access helpful community resources, and implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies to foster healthy child development and academic success. And whereas, the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the important role that school psychologists play in the personal and academic development of our children. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County Public Schools recognizes November 9th through 13th, 2020 as School Psychology Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools and that all staff and students are encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance and it's signed this fourth day of November 2020 by board members and myself. So, with that, thank you very, very much, Ms. Long. I think that the climate and where we find ourselves today, taking care of our health, both physical and mental, is imperative and certainly being challenged. I don't know what we would do without these incredible people in our school system working with our kids. Just thank you for everything you do every single day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no public hearing today. Do we have any public comment? Okay. All right, then, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
On today's consent agenda is the approval of minutes of October 21st, 2020. There are no administrative and supervisory personnel appointments, personnel teachers, office supplies contract, and theatrical and audiovisual replacement at Chopticon, Great Mills, and Lenartown High Schools. I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Myself is aye. Motion is passed. Let's see, first on our action item list is a budget amendment for the capital improvement program. Ms. Howe?
Morning.
Hold on, let Dr. Smith catch up to you.
Say again?
Oh, sorry, Jim, I was talking to Kim.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, Ms. Howe, we are ready.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This time of the year, we are in the process of starting the local capital improvements program discussions with the county commissioners, and as part of that, we do a quarterly budget amendment suite. So, what we have before you today is a budget amendment to return funds back to the county's FIN reserve account. These are projects that have been completed and are ready to be closed out fiscally. When we review, sorry, when we reviewed this with design and construction, we reviewed several projects and we identified four projects which are closed out and ready to go back. Those projects are the Qualified Zone Academy Bond, Lenartown, or the Track Resurfacing Project, Fairlead Academy Relocatables, and DSS IT and Warehouse Facility. The total value that we would be returning is $528,690. We are asking for your approval to approve this item and then return the funds to the Commissioner's FIN reserve for FY '21.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Jim?
Aye.
No, no, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Nagina?
No questions.
Mary?
No questions.
Rita?
No questions, thank you.
Kathy?
No questions.
Okay, now, may I have a motion?
I move--
Go ahead, Mary.
I move that the Board of Education approve agenda item as presented.
Can you read it off of the 1101, off of the board docs? I need the whole thing with the--
Okay.
With the balance amounts?
I don't see it.
How about if I, I can take it?
You want to do it, Kathy? I don't see it.
I move that the Board of, I move that the Board of Education approve the transfer of $528,690 from the four identified local capital improvements program projects to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County FIN 21 Reserve Capital Improvements Project Account.
Do I have a second?
Backed in.
Okay. All right, roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. Okay, next up, we have Mr. Surbiak--
Thank you very much, Ms. Howe.
No, thank you, Kim, sorry. All right, Mr. Surbiak with our staffing plan for special education.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I just wanted to start and just thank the Board, Dr. Smith, Dr. Montgomery, for the collaboration that we're consistently, we have with our department. I know we go by what the Health Department says, but I truly, you know, with those discussions, feel that we are making decisions that are also student-centered, so I really appreciate that and looking at the students' needs. I also want to thank my department supervisors for the work that they're doing and most importantly, the teachers. The teachers are doing an extremely amazing job and I cannot say that enough about our staff that are in our school system. They are working hard to make sure that the needs of our students are met, so I just wanted to thank them as well. So, looking at our staffing plan, so COLMAR requires that the local school systems look at our staffing plan and how our federal funds are being spent. And when looking at that, our required components, we look at, you can go to the next slide, we look at, you know, the evidence from public input. And when we get, we get our public input from our KC representation, that is our Citizens' Advisory Council. We look at maintenance of efforts, we take a very deep dive into the staffing patterns and what that is, we do supervisor reviews, administration reviews, and caseload reviews. And we also look at the implementation and monitor a FATE and how we're providing FATE. When we look at the variables that we consider, and that's on the next slide, we, you know, we look at student's age, we look at staffing, Paris, support within the, in the school, we look at the LRE, which is a least restrictive environment, and most importantly, what our students' needs are and the services that we're providing. So, when we look at that, we are looking at the number of students to be served, but we're not just looking at students as a number, we look at it in multiple different fashions. You can go to the next slide. So, when we look at the elementary school, we take, we use a census-based formula. Again, we use it in a way that we look at all our special education population and the services that we're providing, but we also look at the school system as a whole and the population as a whole. Because we know that our special education teachers are the experts in differentiation, modifying, and accommodating lessons. And they do work with the general ed population in doing so and making sure, making sure that all needs are met, not just our special education students' needs are being met. So, when we look at that, again, we look at the teachers and the differentiation, and when you look at that, it's about one special education teacher per 200 students. And then we look, we look at a caseload of about 18 students per special education teacher. And again, that includes the Paris supports. But again, we don't just, you know, you see a number there, but we also take into account the services provided, the student needs, and the staff that are within the building. When we move on to the middle school, you'll notice that the resource teacher per 1/5, 150 general education students, and that does go down a little bit in middle school because we do take into account that kids are coming from elementary to middle. And when they go into middle school, you're looking at multiple teachers, it's scheduling's a lot different, they're in multiple interventions. You're looking at really building the self-advocacy, advocacy skills at the middle school level and building those organizational skills at that level so that when they're moving on to high school, you know, the goal is that we are able to decline, excuse me, to decrease services within a special education IP so that as they move into high school, they become more self, advocating more for themselves as well as building those organizational skills so that they can be successful in high school. And then when you look at the high school case management, very similar, it's 200 per one, 200 general education teachers per one special education teacher and stays about 15 students per, on the caseload for a special education teacher. Okay, so if you go to the next slide, when we look at related service providers, this gets a little different because we use a workload approach. Again, we don't look at just the numbers, we look at the amount of hours and services that the students are receiving. So, when you look at that, we look at hours and then that's how we establish our case management. And when you look at related service providers, we have an average, and that's on the next slide, we have an average for our OT and PT students, we have an about average of 20 to 30 students per caseload, if you wanted to go on to the next slide. We have about a 20 to 30 students per caseload for our OT and PT staff. And speech and language pathologists, we have about 40 to 50 students per caseload and contracted services. One of the great things with our related service and speech and language, we were able to continue to provide those services even when the mandated school closures-- we were able to continue to provide those services even when the mandated school closures occurred. So our speech and language pathologists have been working diligently, and we have our OT and PT staff really working hard, supporting families, and doing things at home with their, with their children. And our ONM is also providing services if families agree at home, outside at their home. So, you know, we're really moving forward to making sure that we're providing all our services for our students. Our regional program, so we have the Infants and Toddlers Program, and that's an average of about one teacher per 25 children, and that's our youngest population of students. We look at our preschool, we use a nine-to-one ratio, and I know last year we've been really working hard to make, to try to get that one teacher per two para in a classroom. And we are moving forward toward that, and I am excited that we are able to start moving towards, and we're getting there, so that we have two para FTEs and one teacher in the classrooms. Preschool special ed, again, one teacher, one para per nine students. When you look at our learning adjustment program, we are at one teacher, two para's per nine students. Our Supporting Academic and Independent Living Program, our SALE program, we are averaging, our average is one teacher, one para per students. But like I said, we are moving towards and we are making progress towards one teacher and two para's per nine students. And we also have our enhanced adult supports in those classrooms based on student needs. When we look at our Compass Program, again, we are at one teacher, one para per nine students. And that is an, that is an intensive case management. We also include our enhanced adult support as needed for students that have additional needs. And our Gateway Program is one teacher and two job coaches. And a little bit about our Gateway Program, I'm really excited because we are expanding within our community, we are reaching out to a lot more workforces in our community, and our community's really been responsive to allowing our Gateway students to participate in working with their, working with their businesses, and we are very excited. We just had a student hired on base, working, so we are, the program has had it in a great direction, so I just wanted to thank the staff that are working in that program. I did, there is a TIDES program, and I did want to explain a little bit about what our TIDES program is. So our TIDES program is teaching independence and developmental skills to early elementary students. And we started this program, we do get, we get looked at by the state each year on our disproportionality, and what the state found was that our intellectually disabled students in the African-American population was starting to increase. Now, we were, prior to the disproportionality, we really wanted to target our early learners, because that is where you're going to get, you know, you can teach those skills at the early age, so as they move forward, you know, we can be successful with the students. And we were able to develop a program, it's two classrooms at Green Holly, that really, this program focuses on students that have significant cognitive deficiency. However, it really supports the independence, the developmental skills within the school, and it allows for multiple opportunities to work on student behavior in a smaller group setting. And the goal is there that we, you know, we, we work with those skills so that when they're in, and this is only our primary level, but when they get to second and third grade, we've really established a solid foundation for those students moving forward as they get into second and third, so that, so that we do not have to label in that ID category, and we have a plan in place for those students as they move forward in their academic career. When we get concerns and requests, we monitor, we do self-audits, we have indicators, federal indicators that the state works with us, and we get a report card from the state. Feedback from site-based administrators, we are constantly working with our administrators, we constantly work with our staff, our teachers, we meet with them regularly. It's most important to us that we're making sure that the schools have what they need so that every student can succeed. And we work with the school leadership, again, if we get a parent complaint from the state, it is a very informal process, we do a self-audit, we look at the complaint, we go through documentation, we meet with the administrators, we meet with the staff, and then I follow up with a written plan to correct that complaint with the parent, with the state. So we do take every complaint, concern seriously, and we do follow up with a written response to the state on every concern. And again, it's a very collaborative approach, we don't look at complaints as a negative, we look at complaints as a concern from the community that we can build upon and be better in. So every complaint or concern that we get, we do take seriously to improve our practice. Evaluations, again, it's family input, and I highly encourage our KC, that's our council advisory committee, is growing. We are, again, we almost have representative for all our schools. We invite and encourage everyone to attend. There is one representative per school, but anyone can attend, and we really do have great dialogue at those meetings so we can get community and parent feedback, and again, how to improve our practice. The staff input, again, is vital. Special education teachers, administrators, they're the ones onsite, working with the students, and they are the ones that know what they need to make sure our students are successful. And again, as discussed, we have a Maryland report card that we get to improve our practice. With that, I open up to any questions and ask that the Board of Education approve on this item as presented.
Nagina, you're at the top, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Jim?
I'm kind of really impressed with this TIDES program. Early intervention for the kids, kids that need special education, special support, I think is paramount. I guess my question is, is you were showing about the report cards. Do you have enough data to indicate how effective your program is?
Yes, we're, we're going to use a lot of diagnostic data. We have programs like iReady, and we're really going to have to look at DIBELS reading assessments, reading inventories, so it's not, there's not a one, one-source tell-all type of, we're going to be having to pull a lot of data in to really support where these students were, and it's kind of similar to when mandated, mandated schools closed. We have to know where those students were when schools closed, and we have to get a pre-diagnostic to start, we have to know where our kids are. And then we'll kind of continue that practice throughout the school year, moving forward. So we're pretty confident with the program we purchased with iReady and the data that we're going to have and will have moving forward on where our kids are currently and where they're going to be at the end of the school year.
Great, great program.
Mary?
Thank you so much, Mr. Surbiak, good job. I'm glad to see the community is supporting our Gateway students with meaningful jobs and careers and potentially leading them to get employed. I think the coaches are excellent, they work with the students, and employers to make sure that the students can stay meaningfully employed. Thank you for your positive attitude, that you recognize feedback as a positive avenue for improvement, and that you solicit input, and you don't look at input from parents, students, community, or teachers as a negative thing, so thank you for your open-mindedness.
This TIDES program, like Mr. Davis said, looks like a great opportunity to work with our students. Are these students that don't particularly fit into another category?
Yeah, we identify those students who we feel, based on data and some developmental delay identification, that we feel that might have significant cognitive concerns moving as they move out of primary grade levels. So that is where our target is, that we can really, you know, have those multiple opportunities to support these students that when they are at the primary grade levels, we are, you know, that we have a plan in place so that they can be successful moving forward.
Are you looking at, because it goes K through second grade, are you looking at expanding that to cover all elementary school?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna look at our data and see where our program, how the program, if it's successful. I really am encouraged by, I did stop by last week, and I was encouraged, you know, to see and observe what was going on. So yes, I think, you know, I also think that we have a block in between of our SALE population and our diploma-bound students as well. So I think this is a start to really focusing on those students that have those cognitive needs. And I do, I think that, you know, based on what we learned from this program, which I feel will be successful, it's going to open the door for other opportunities.
And you said there's going to be nine students in the class. Now, is this self-contained, or is this where the student will be kind of fluent, moving in and out and going to the general education?
Great question, it's an inclusive setting, so they will be going into the general education setting, and that is our ultimate goal, to get the students to remain in that inclusive setting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have one question, and, well, it's multiple questions, really. So we've heard a lot about the struggle that our, some of our IEP students have had so far, especially in the elementary school setting, in achieving success with, with the online learning platform. So as we bring students back, and I know I've mentioned this before in previous years when this plan is presented, the average of the one special education teacher per 200, and maybe this isn't a discussion for this meeting, but maybe an update going forward as we bring more students into school. But as we, as we get our IEP and somewhat, you know, academically challenged students back into the building, how are we going to evaluate them, because a lot, they haven't been in school since March, see where they are, and then attempt to catch them up to where they should be at this point in time?
So first, what I want to say, as students come back, we do have to reestablish, reestablish the core instruction.
Right.
Because, again, we want them to, if we don't establish that core instruction, they just continue to fall further, further behind. With that being said, we did purchase iReady, and we do need a pre-diagnostic. And again, that is just a, that is just one tool. We need to go back last year where students were prior to school closure, where they are in that pre-diagnostic assessment, and the iReady assessments will continue throughout the school year. So we will have data points, but again, we've been very clear with our teacher, with our teachers. If they're not making progress, we will be documenting that they're not making progress and establishing a plan on how we can move forward and make sure that we are providing those recovery services as needed.
But then, well, then that leads then to my second question, because based on where our enrollment is, if we don't have a hold harmless provision at some point from the state legislature and our funding drops off, I don't, I don't know if we have the resources in order to make sure that every one of those students reaches the point as to where they should be in the second marking period or third marking period of fourth, third, second, or whatever grade. So that's, that's where, that's where my concern is. I know, I know we have a plan, but then do we have the staffing in order to achieve the plan and, you know, bring these students back to where they should be if they had been in school five days a week for the past however many weeks and months?
I do think that's a difficult question to answer right now.
Not expecting it, right.
Because we are just kind of getting into that pre-diagnostic. But I do think we'll have a better understanding in quarter three to see if our students are progressing and where they currently are. But I do agree with you, I think we have the materials when we talk about the hard materials, but then again, when you look at the staffing and hours, that might be, might be, and again, I don't have that data right now, but might, that might be, that we have to do, I mean, to provide those recovery services.
Okay, so then maybe that, maybe that's a conversation for later once we have students back in school and we see where everyone is, because, I mean, my assumption is that there will have to be a lot of quote-unquote recovery and individual one-on-one instruction in order to get student A, B, C, D, or whoever it is to where they need to be, and that might not necessarily be able to take place in the traditional classroom mainstream setting that they've been, you know, used to and subjected to for, you know, their school career, so.
Right.
Because at that point, especially at the elementary school level, those are the kids that I think are suffering the most and that we just, we have to concentrate on and not, and make sure that they don't get left behind, you know, so.
You've mentioned several times the pre-diagnostic testing that's ongoing. Are you having any difficulties administering those tests? Because you're having to do them virtually, and I know I've heard just anecdotally with DIBELS, some of the difficulties in students following along and keeping up with the diagnostic. If they lose their place, then they may have known the word, but, but because they've lost the place, they, they miss it. And I just wonder how, how it's working out for you with our, with our special needs students?
Yeah, our teachers have been really creative where they're able to do like a double screen share and walk them through the pre-assessment. But again, it is a tool that the kids are using, and it's, and it's an online tool. So yeah, I do feel that there are cases, and we do work with staff, where kids might just be clicking buttons or struggle because they're not, you know, they don't know the platform. But that is why, again, we're going to use this program throughout, and when, and as students come back, we'll be, you know, better able to assist students. And again, I just want to reiterate, that's just one tool. We just want a pre-diagnostic that we can start with. We're looking at everything, and when I say everything, present levels of performance, we're looking at progress monitoring, we're looking at goals and objectives. We will be using that iReady to, you know, in the, in the years prior, we've, we've always said progress on goals and objectives, but we really want to do a better job on having hard data on the progress, so we'll be using iReady as well for that. So to answer that question, yeah, I do, I don't think it's 100% efficient, absolutely not. But again, it's one tool that we're using, and we have multiple other data points that we'll be looking at.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, may I have a motion?
I move that...
Oh, wait, Mary, Mary found it. Go ahead, go ahead, Mary. You're muted. You're muted. Unmute. There you go. You're welcome.
All right, I move that the Board of Education approve the Special Education Local Application for Federal Funds, LAFF Staffing Plan, to, for school year 2021 as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, others, Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, Ms. McCourt for our financial report for the month of October.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Smith is working on reading out my financial report. The iReady assessment that Mr. Surbiak was speaking of was actually something that we were able to purchase under the CARES Act Titering Funds. And although those funds expire at the end of December, we'll continue to explore other opportunities for additional funding to support special education coverage starting beyond January.
I don't have it. So, great, let me go to board docs. Let me log in, I'll have to pull it, I'll have to pull it up through board docs.
We haven't.
This is a really wonderful opportunity for everybody to see where everything is in board docs, so you can see where it all is.
And how secure all of your passwords are.
It grades them out. All right.
All right, Tammy, we're on.
Wait a second, I got a, now I got a screen share, hold on. There we go.
Now we're on, Tammy.
There you go.
So for the month of October, our total budget as adopted was $231.5 million. We received revenues to date of $98.2 million with remaining balance of $133.3 million. We have received funds totaling 42.41% of our budget year-to-date, so we are on track with the exception of one area of concern, and that is our interest income. We have budgeted $600,000 in interest income, and we have received year-to-date $15,220, representing only 2.55%. We've estimated this out and projected it out for the remainder of fiscal year, and we're looking at only receiving approximately $27,000 in that account. It's quite unfortunate that the market is not, has not been in our favor as a result of the pandemic. On the expenditure side, our total encumbrances outstanding are $151.9 million. Year-to-date encumbrances and expenditures total $207.2 million, representing 89.51% of our budget. And there are no areas of concern on the expenditure side. I will point out, though, that as a result of the fluctuation in our interest income, we've decided to defer the contribution of our OPED contribution of $2 million until much later. we've decided to defer the contribution of our OPED contribution of $2 million until much later in the fiscal year. So we can manage our cash flow accordingly. Are there any questions?
Nagina, do you have any questions?
No questions.
All right, Nagina?
No questions.
Mary?
No questions, thank you.
Rita?
No questions.
Kathy?
No questions.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Tammy. Okay, anyone have anything else?
No.
Okay. Our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, November 18th at 6:00 PM, and we are adjourned.